We have two items on the agenda this evening. And the first one is... Discussion on ordinance regarding container-style buildings in the city of College Park. Our city planner, Ms. Washington, is here to discuss this particular issue. Good evening.
Soon as I can, mask off. All right, yeah, happy to be back. Happy to see everybody up here. So just to refresh everybody's memory on this really quick. If you remember, back in May, we had an application for our container-style buildings. We ended up approving that application, but we also instated a moratorium on that type of building. So we were tasked with working with the city attorney's office and going through and seeing what we could regulate, how we could do it. And we had a few different codes that we looked at. The city of Atlanta, we knew that they had some of these types of buildings. They actually don't regulate them. They just consider them any other pre-built or modular building. We had the city of Capeville. They have a couple extra design guidelines in their downtown areas. Then we had the city of Stockbridge, which they also regulate as modular buildings, but they provide some guidelines as well. So we kind of combined a few of those and then with some suggestions from the city attorney's office. And I also included in your packet their legal research, giving us the ability to regulate these. And that was a question everybody had on their mind. So I did have a power point to show. Can we pull it up real quick? Perfect, yeah. So these are just some examples. And basically, what we're here to present today is a model ordinance on these types of buildings. So we went through and have some regulations here on applicability, the zoning districts they would be allowed in, what we want to prohibit them being used for, the distance between these, which I know is some people's concerns, and how they're constructed. And I did get one comment from Councilman Clay about storage or transportation of hazardous material. So I did make an adjustment. If you're looking at your packet here under E, Construction, I added a number six there to say no container that was used for the storage or transportation of hazardous material may be converted for commercial occupancy. So we added that. And of course, we're not adopting this today or anything. Just here to talk about it and get your thoughts. Can we go to the next slide, please, Ms. Washington? All right. So these are just some of the questions I have for you guys. Is the distance of 2,500 feet enough? Is it too much? That is between parcels. So it would be parcel line to parcel line. How we would do, how we would measure that?
Well, like a half mile.
Sorry, good.
You're talking about a half mile.
About a half mile.
Yeah.
Also, conditional use permit in mixed-use districts, including TOD, DC, and HC appropriate? The application that we heard in May, that was in the TOD district, so we did require conditional use permit for that. We do have extra design guidelines for those districts. So that's why we have the next conditional use. But I wanted to get your feedback on that, of course. Any additional prohibited uses we'd like to see? And I have it as two stacked containers. If we think that this will only be one high, or if we think we want to let them go up to three. As we know, our ordinance is 35 feet, so three would be max regardless. They wouldn't be able to go over that unless they have a conditional height permit. And then anything else that you guys would like us to consider?
What, under the recommended changes, I think it is digital page eight, item D2, other non-traditional building types may not be located within 2,500 feet of another building of the same height. It seemed like that could be a little vague, maybe?
Yeah, so I talked with the city attorney about this a couple different times, and the city attorney about this a couple different times. And people call them different things. Not everyone says container-style.
Okay.
So we were trying to capture that.
So it would be one container can't be within 2,500 feet of another container, but not necessarily another non-traditional building type that may come along?
Right, yeah. Yeah, that was the idea. So kind of trying to buffer us for the future of those options. How the city of Atlanta is written is modular building type. So we did also consider that as an option. We could say modular instead of non-traditional.
Non-traditional just seems a little vague to me, but I don't know what everyone else thinks.
So if you had a container building, say you had an art alley back behind Main Street on that alley, and you had one container, you couldn't have another one within a half a mile?
Hmm.
But you know, if you had like one art building and then another one right next to it, that would not be acceptable.
So if they were on the same parcel, that would be okay. We did talk about limiting the number of containers that can be on one parcel. We decided against that, but willing to consider it if we think...
I think it's a good requirement, Councilman, because what you could end up with is a container city. You could end up with a whole block, somebody buying up the block and a whole bunch of different parcels and putting containers all over it. And I think that's what we're trying to eliminate.
But if we're talking about a half mile, and I'm going to use the city of Capeville for...
Two and a half blocks.
For reference. There's a, there's an art installation at the edge of, I think it's the Lucas Yating Park, that is lovely. You walk in, they rotate the art through there. And I think behind the businesses on the other side of Central Avenue, and I don't know if that's 2,500 feet or not, there are containers as well. And I mean, one doesn't really have anything to do with the other. In fact, you can't see one from where you are. If you're in the vicinity of one of them, you can't see the other. So I mean, if there was, say, like if we're looking, if we're...
Have all of you been to that alley in Capeville, behind the businesses on Central?
That's where I was going, yeah.
Yeah. So we couldn't necessarily have like a collection of containers that has art, for instance, or were open for special events. They do that quite a bit.
Under this, or the way the ordinance is shaping up now, no, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Right, unless...
But if for some reason we wanted to do that...
We could change.
We could always, can't we, do a variance?
Yes, we could, we could write in...
A conditional use?
We could write in. I want to write into this ordinance if you wanted to permit a variance, so that it's clear what you can, that you can receive a variance.
I mean, then you get into the issue of picking and choosing. But what the mayor is saying makes sense. You might want to have an art community that had a series of those things, and they would be on different properties. But that would be a conscious attempt to create a block, and it would have a certain theme. But if somebody decided all of a sudden, that containers are a very inexpensive way to do things, as we discovered with the developer that we approved several meetings ago, right?
Right.
So if a whole bunch of people decided, hey, let's take this transition zone into Six West, and for rock-bottom prices, we can buy a bunch of containers and we can populate Container City, that's something I wouldn't be in favor of.
Understood, understood. I think, I think... Go ahead.
Are we talking about permanent structures or just, let's say, if a person got one in their house, small one, or if they have, or something, they redo it. But we're talking about permanent structures or just...
Right, these would be permanent for commercial occupancy. Right now, I have that they would be prohibited in any of our residential districts.
Is that now?
That they would be prohibited in residential districts. So you wouldn't be able to use them for residential occupancy.
So you can't even use them temporarily in residential?
Yeah. Not as the code is now.
You see them as temporary when people bring in their equipment and their different saws and other things for remodeling a house. They'll have that, and they'll work on the house and keep everything locked up. And as soon as the house is redone, it'll be removed.
Right, so we do love that for storage, but not during construction.
Not to live in.
But not to live in.
Yes, okay.
Now, I think you have Capeville in here. I don't want to stop someone who's got a great idea for, you know, say, an art installation or, you know, to create sort of a mini arts district. But I certainly understand what you're saying, Councilman Clay, in terms of the concerns that this is just a way to cut corners.
That's why, that's why I say if we have a conditional use or variance process, then we could make a decision if we want to use or if we agree with the use. And in fact, maybe we even want to plan an art district. Maybe we want an art block.
So if we're talking about downtown specifically, that is all zoning TOD, so that would be a conditional use to have containers.
And we've got that control.
So we have that covered. And in Six West, too, luckily, that is a planned development, so that's already kind of spoken for. And you all will be able to approve all of those final development plans. So there is a mechanism to prevent containers in Six West if that's the desire.
But where does Six West begin?
Great question.
See, that's the problem, because I think there is a gap between downtown, Main Street, and the next block, let's say.
There is.
And Six West, the official boundary. And that's this transition area that we've said, oh, yeah, that's part of Six West, but it's a transition area. But strictly speaking, I don't think in the zoning it's called that, is it?
It is not. It's TOD. That, yeah, the transit-oriented district. So those, so in that transition area, those would be conditional uses, how this is written right now.
So we would still have...
Still have a say.
Yep.
Yeah. So we really want to be thinking about other places in the city that these might be appropriate, and do we want to allow businesses to, you know, use them to expand? Do we want to allow businesses? There's some examples in Atlanta. I know of a coffee shop on Howe Mill that is out of a container. And honestly, it doesn't really look like a container.
Nope, it doesn't.
So there are ways to do it if we want to allow it. It's just, we want to say something so we, so we know what our direction is. There is a full building code for it that we'll have to adopt this year, in the 2021 International Building Code. So that's good news. We won't have to worry about writing those regulations ourselves or holding people to specific standards. Those will already be written for us.
Any other questions? Ms. Washington, have you gotten what you need from us?
I think so. Does anyone have any? It's not, I'm not hearing any major concerns with how this is written here.
No?
No, I think it's pretty good, yes.
But maybe possibly writing in a variance for the distance if appropriate.
I would think so, but is that the will of the body? To give us that flexibility in the event that we do have that container row of art or whatever the case may be?
Yeah, as long as we've got... The only danger in trying to do things by variance, and correct me wrong, if I'm wrong, city attorney, if you do too much picking and choosing, then you're going to get accused of, I don't know, discretionary zoning or something.
So long as you have a standard that's clear and delineated and you stick to it, then everybody just has to live in that.
Yeah, but I mean, if we, if we make an exception for this art group, let's say that we decide we want an art alley downtown.
Okay.
So we make an exception for this. And these are all the businesses, the artists and so forth that we'd like to have in there, and this is great. So somebody else comes along and says, hey, I want to have a block that is art, only what I'm going to do is basically sell junk. And we know that. And we say, no, no, we're not going, we're not going to grant a variance for that. When you start doing that, don't you get yourself in trouble?
Possibly, but that's why I say that if we were to objectively demonstrate that the first person met arts, state, and the second person did not, there's not a lot of picking and choosing, it's about art, figure a inherent application of them.
But we don't have the standards written down.
What Nikki said, that's what she's going to add.
Yeah, so I'll look into it. And see, so I would, I would assume it's going to have to say something like, maybe varied if the, these certain criteria are met.
Yeah, well, you're going to have to put your thinking cap on for that one and figure out how to word that.
Yes, for sure. I like the not visible one for sure.
Yeah.
So think about that, and possibly for certain uses, since we've been talking a lot about art, maybe getting that in there as well. Some options.
Well, I think it's a good start to the discussion. Any other questions for Ms. Washington? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And are, are you sitting down? Where are you going? I think you're number two as well.
I am, I am.
Discussion on the comprehensive plan update.
All right. So sorry for the late notice. We actually got the full plan from ARC on Friday, so I sent that over to you guys just in case you had the opportunity to review it. But I just wanted to run through where we're at real quick. So we have a quick presentation here. This is just talking about why we do the comprehensive plan. We brought together the public, local governments, planning commissions, to build that shared vision that everyone will work to accomplish and implement. So it's our long-term vision for the city. We have to update it every five years. And the reason we have to do that is for qualified local government status. So we have to make sure that we qualify for those state funding grants and permits. Make sure, get all that good stuff. Here's everything that's in our comprehensive plan. So not all of these are required. So for example, arts and culture is not a required element for your comprehensive plan, but since that was one of our goals and something we want to see more of in the city, we went ahead and added that as a section for our specific College Park plan. The most important things in here that I would like you guys to check out when you have a chance are our community goals and our community work program. So the community goals are what we heard, what we got public input on, and what our community wants to see us work towards. And that community work program is how we're going to do that, right? So over the next five years, what are we going to implement? What are we going to do to try to make those goals happen? Comprehensive planning, it's an important management tool that promotes a strong, healthy community. So we really did have a lot of community involvement during this process, which we're happy to say, and we worked with a lot of different boards to get their input. These are just our community goals. I know you guys have read through these. I actually have two, some snapshots for you all, so I know some of this information is new. May I come give these to you guys?
We have one, we have one problem, and we don't have a copy of your presentation that you sent. You're giving a different presentation.
You should, so I...
I think it's, I think these are the highlights of what we received, aren't they?
Yes, yes. But there is, I did update this presentation. I sent it on Friday.
The community goals are, they're more specific in the presentation we received, but they're, they are listed in there. Like on page, packet, digital page 15, goal one and goal two and goal three are all listed. They're just in more detail.
Okay, I guess where I'm going is that we ought to have this information in our packet when we get the packet.
Are we talking about our presentation?
In, in the presentation?
It is. It's right here. If you look at packet page 15, the goals are listed. It's not exactly in this format, but it's, it is right there.
Yeah, the format has, the format has changed.
It'd be nice. I personally would like to see the same thing in my packet that I'm seeing at the meeting. Maybe I'm being picky.
Understood, understood. No, I, this was a, I apologize for that. It was, I was trying to add a few more things in for this work session post submitting the presentation.
But that's the same thing you came out with your email, the long presentation.
Yes. Yes. Yes, so we're, it's all the same information, just in a couple different formats. So we can, Shavell, you can hit the next slide if you would. So this is, this is a new slide. This was not in the packet. This was a part of that, the extra information I sent on Friday. So this is our future land use map. This is important for rezoning cases. So when we're going to consider if a property should be rezoned and what it should be rezoned for, what that use may be for, this is the map that we're going to be referring to. So we want to make sure that we agree on, you know, what the future of these places should be. The one big change in this from our last plan is that we pulled out, you'll see that the existing multifamily is hash-marked on this map. And that was not like that before. It was just called out as multifamily. The reason that we did that is we don't want to see these multifamily expand in these areas. So the ones that are in this low-density area or in the medium-density area, we want to be able, we want to, you know, they'll be grandfathered in, of course, they can have the number of units they have now, update them, et cetera. But we don't want to see expansion of that use in those areas. If that makes sense.
And go into a little bit about the rationale behind that?
So the rationale behind that is from our community feedback, there was a lot of talking about preserving those single-family homes and some of those larger lots in Ward Four, and they don't want to see that turn into smaller lots and smaller homes and town homes and smaller and smaller and smaller. So that was our way of kind of calling that out and saying, okay, this is going to stay this way. If we have a rezoning application to increase the density, this is our argument for rejecting it and saying, this is actually not what the community wants in this area.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that we would not increase the density. You got the same thing in Ward One on, on Rugby.
Yes.
On the north end of Rugby. So we would not be allowing somebody to come in and subdivide those and turn them into higher density? By the way, where is this map in the, in the draft that you sent? What page?
That's a good...
Just roughly.
It's, I know it's section...
I don't think it was in with our workshop packet.
No, it wasn't in the, but she sent an email, which I didn't have a chance to really go through the document, but I've got the document here. And if I could know what page it was on, I could actually look at it in my copy that I have with me.
I believe.
It's in here as well.
Let me take a look real quick.
It's also in here. It's right here, too. Kind of small, but it's, it's in there.
Is it small in there? I'm sorry.
I mean, it's a little small. That's okay.
There's a faster way to find it.
What is it? Forty-seven? Forty-seven? I'm hearing?
Forty-seven. Thank you.
Yeah, chapter seven, land use. And then also a part of that chapter, we get a little bit more in-depth about what each of these categories are and what zoning districts would be permitted in them.
I said the north end of Rugby. I should have said the west end of Rugby. I don't know what I'm thinking.
It's on the north side of the street.
Looks like that's still, that'll still be considered low-density, that area of Rugby. There is in that, in the low-density character area, which I'll find what page that's on. I believe it's first. Yeah, so on page 48, there is a provision in there for subdivision of five-plus acre lots should be considered. So five-plus acre lots, we would say, we would consider splitting these into smaller low-density lots. That makes sense.
So if, if you, let's say on the west end of Rugby, you have some five-acre lots, or in Ward Four, you have some five-acre lots, and then you have some two-acre lots, one and two, maybe even three-acre lots. What I don't think we would want to see, and I'll talk to Councilman Day as well, because he's got the same problem, I would not want to see the five-acre lot be able to be subdivided to the point where all of a sudden you have one-acre lot, two-acre lots, and then you have quarter-acre lots in a big chunk. So you've broken up the low-density with a very high-density. So I would think that if we, if we allow that to be subdivided, we'd want to put some kind of limit on it that it would not be, let's say, I'll just make something up, lower than the average lot size. No lot would be smaller than the average lot size of the lots around it, or something like that.
Right, so there is, we did add in the appropriate zoning districts for each of these categories, and the only ones we have in low-density are R1 and then PD, if you wanted to rezon to a planned development, which would be something specific that, of course, we could review further. But R1 is a 20,000-square-foot lot, so we wouldn't want to see anything smaller than 20,000 square feet.
But how many acres is 20,000 square feet?
Half an acre.
Okay, but see, that's where I'm going. So if somebody has a nice one or two-acre lot there, and all of a sudden, they've got half-acre lots, a whole bunch of half-acre lots, while you divide five acres into half-acre lots, you've got what? Ten, ten half-acre lots?
Right, that is, that is, that is true. So how subdividing specifically works is by zoning district. So if it's zoned R1 and they have enough, they can meet the zoning parameters for R1, we can't restrict them from subdividing.
Well, I think we need to do something about that then.
Okay.
How much of, how big of a problem would this be? How many, how many five-plus acre lots do we have in the city?
Not very many, from what I've seen. It would be, I, the reason we added that in there is because I didn't want there to be a situation where there is a five-acre or more lot and they can't subdivide it because we have put in a policy in our comprehensive plan that states that, you know, no subdividing should occur in this low-density residential area.
I'm going to be looking at that very closely. I don't know how about, how Councilman Gay feels about it, but I'm going to be looking at it very carefully.
Well, they could take, they could take a two-acre lot and split it up and make it into two very small lots and put a huge house on those, each lot, which is some of the things they've done.
Oh, yeah.
Over in our, my area over by Woodward over there, they've taken some of those.
I think we, the bigger even worry with that is that we have created a lack of pervious surface, and that's created flood issues over there. And that's...
Councilman Gay?
To Councilman Clay's point, I would have wanted to see a quarter-acre lot cut out of an acre. That would be my own concern. We don't have a lot of quarter-acre lots in the entire world.
Well, it, it's been a while since I've looked at the R1, R2, R3 characteristics, but they have to meet a certain square footage to be classified as those areas. And what we've tried to do, even in rezoning, is be consistent with, with what's already there. I know that there was a, there was this, an instance on my street a couple of years ago where they wanted to rezone, I think, I think they wanted to go R3 and everything else on my street is R2. And eventually, the planning commission said, let's be consistent. And I think that's probably one of the most important things that we can do, is maintain a sense of consistency throughout all of our neighborhoods, so we don't have, we don't have the quarter-acre lot next to a half or a one-acre lot where that is traditionally what's been done. So I think that the, the zoning for the particular residential areas covers that already. I don't, I don't know how much, I just don't have a sense of how big, how big of an issue this really is. I, I don't, I don't know how much, I, I just don't have a sense of how big of, how big of an issue this really is.
Right. And something we want to consider too is if subdividing is something we want to address in the zoning code. That wouldn't be something specifically, like, specific rules for subdividing is something we want to address in the zoning code. In our comprehensive plan, this is high, really high level. So just general policy is we don't want to see subdividing in this area unless there's a situation where you have a five-plus acre lot, it, you know, they want to split it into three lots, and we think that's reasonable. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I, I guess, I, I somewhat agree with what the mayor is saying, provided that the range, the size range that's allowed within that zoning category isn't huge. But if you have a zoning category, and I don't know what it is for R1 off the top of my head, but if it varies from, let's say, a half-acre to five acres, that's a huge range. So people who buy a two- or three-acre property in that, they bought that property because they want two or three acres. And they're not looking to have five houses next to them that are half acres, although half acre is big, or even one acre maybe. I'm just, the other thing that we have going on, we have outside companies that are buying up houses in College Park and going in and doing quickie renovations on them and increasing the resale value tremendously. We will have firms wanting to come in and it can be arranged, they can buy under somebody else's name or what have you. They'll be buying up five-acre properties if we have one or three-acre properties with the idea specifically of coming in and squeezing as many things on that property as they can do so, uh, under the zoning code. And if that's what we want, that's, that's fine. But one of my objectives is to make things tight enough that, that people can't get around them using loopholes that we didn't foresee. And, and, and that's all I'm trying to do, you know? And, and I think you have certain rights to your property. It's just like with B and Bs. People that didn't buy a house to be next to a hotel with all the traffic going in and out and all the different people that they have no idea who they are.
Right.
Some people say, it's my property, I can do whatever I want. I don't happen to believe that. I believe that one's property ends where the other ones begin, and if you bought next to a hotel, then that's, you live with a hotel. If you bought next to a place downtown, you have to live with that. But it's the same kind of concept.
Understood, understood.
Anyhow, I've said my piece.
Ms. Washington, can I add this before I forget? On packet page eighteen, it indicates that we have, uh, that the city, under I five, public health, that the city's home to two conventional grocery stores, and unless we have annexed some spa, some land that I don't know of, I think that Piggly Wiggly is in East Point.
Interesting. That must be a, that Piggly Wiggly is in East Point, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. When I was reading it, I thought, oh, no, no, I had to make me go back to Google and check it, but I was, I was pretty darn sure.
Good catch.
Yes, great catch. Thank you.
You got mine as well. I know you got mine.
I did, I did. Um, I think we can move along. So just, this is just recap of the community outreach that we've done. We did have four, [laughing], four steering committee meetings. Uh, we did have a public re, meeting virtually with the entire community. And then we did have two focus groups, one on transportation and one on housing. So you see that those are also, um, dedicated sections in our comprehensive plan. And then the community survey as well. And we've also attached those results as an appendix in that document that you guys received Friday. So, um, I know that you probably haven't had a chance to review all of it, but just to give a little timeline on where we're at is we will be bringing this back, um, for public hearing on August sixteenth. So I'll be requesting that public hearing August second. That public hearing is for the community to know that we have a draft and that we're going to let DCA review that draft. So the Department of Community Affairs will do their review. They have a sixty-day review period. I'm told it doesn't typically take them sixty days, but we want to give them their allotted time. And then we'll be bringing it back with their comments and any comments that we receive from the community, from you all, from Planning Commission, from the DCA Board during that time, and get all those comments together. We'll make those changes, and then we'll bring it back for public hearing again in October, where hopefully we will be adopting it. So that's the, so this is by no means your last opportunity to make comments. This is just to get everybody updated, make sure we're all on the same page moving this process forward.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Washington?
Yeah, I had a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I don't know if it's part of comprehensive planning, but I think education, K through twelve, or even, uh, you know, that's conversations about that, but I think, can you put that as part of comprehensive? Because I don't see it anywhere in any of the goals, education. And I don't believe that you could be kind of community with Spidey without good quality education. The second thing is, well, my second comment is, can you balance out, I know it's in the draw, I see it in the map, the map you have, but can it be a goal that we put an emphasis on logistics? Because that's the challenge I'm having with Ward Four. It's trying to balance logistics with our Liverpool community. That's my biggest problem. And the third and final, my point, I don't know if this can be put in, but I think we also need more, 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 more recreation. We have great facilities, but I just don't see all of the city involved.
And when you say, um, for education, do you mean like expand educational programs that the city is a part of?
I mean, like a school.
In what ways?
We just have a, uh-
Contributing to the schools?
Private school, and we have a charter school.
Right.
But that, that can accommodate citywide.
Right. So supporting Fulton County schools?
Yeah, if it's part, if you can put that in a comprehensive.
There's, there's discussion of public education on packet page seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, but I see it as not in your goals. I don't know how the goals are different from your narrative.
Sure. I, I'll, I'll take, I'll take a closer look at that, what we can, what we can include. Because I really want to think about the cities, this, you know, the city's role, what we can, how we can make that into a, a, a work pr, a work program item.
I heard someone say on the school board, we don't have the length. Well, what, what would you put it? That's what one of the board members told me, what would we put it? So if we're talking about a comprehensive plan, that should be part of the conversation. And that's a new round of splotch money that, that one of the, uh, that's just been proposed by Fulton County. So maybe we should reach out and say, hey, we, this is part of our comprehensive plan to improve our education and college, our education.
All right. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Washington?
So you'll be bringing this back to us.
What I saw.
I'm sorry. There, there were multiple comments from both sides. Councilman Allen, I heard.
I just said you'll be bringing this back to us after you have the remarks from the citizens, right?
Yes. So I, I've sent it out. It's on, it's posted online as well. Um, but we'll be holding that public hearing to hear it on, um, the sixteenth. So hopefully people will have comments to make. Um, but again, that's not even their last opportunity to make them. We can make them all the way through October through adoption. Uh, we just want to make sure that we have the, the meat of this decided before we send it to DCA. We don't want to make any major changes post the community affair, Department of Community Affairs review. So that's the, so we want to make sure, you know, small changes, we can make those throughout this process. We just want to make sure we get the big stuff down. So our goals are big, you know, we want to make sure our future land use map, we agree. It's a big part of this plan. Um, those community work program items, make sure you guys, those are priorities that we think we can get done in the next five years, that sort of thing.
Um, picking back on what Councilman Gay was saying just a little bit, I, I think one of the important components of what I think all of us would love to see in the next five years is a real focus on workforce development and aligning the talent and the resources that we have in the city with the needs of our corporate partners, both within the city and in the region, and certainly, uh, aligned with the airport as well, because they are such a driver of what we do. It, I think it's important for us to be wait, pe, excuse me, let's try that again, maybe not enough caffeine, um, to work, um, in partnership with all of those entities to make sure that we, that our citizens are poised to take advantage of all the development that's happening in this region. Councilman Clay?
Uh, yeah, I, I thought, Nikki, I thought what was in the packet, uh, that I didn't have a chance to read, I thought that was very well-written, and I only found two or three things, uh, that I felt were, uh, needs to be changed. I assume then, to get good public comment, that we're going to put this out on the website?
Yes, it's, it's actually, it's already posted on the planning page, and I'll, actually, I'll talk to IT about just getting it on our main, our main page as well.
I think communication should probably be able to assist.
Or, sorry.
Get it on the city website.
Yes.
I just had one more comment on the community goals number two. It says, College Park will reinvest in its historically underserved and neglected communities like those along Gobby Road and Old National Highway for equitable redevelopment that benefits legati, legacy residents. So legacy residents, I think about Ward Four, because it still has been where some of the legacy residents first came. But I guess my question is, it doesn't address anything about it being a walkable community. There's, there's, I mean, that's in the, in the tie, in the tie ward of twenty-four streets, there's only two streets with sidewalks. It's not a walkable community. I just think those are, ought to be some comprehensive benefits. Some cities take, I think that's a group called Peds, P E D S, pedestrian. Atlanta got a big Peds program. We don't have that here. I see people walking up and down Lake Shore.
We do have-
So we, we are, for the most important points, a legacy community.
Yes. We, we do have a couple, um, community work program items for sidewalks, but I will check. I have Lake Shore here. Is there anywhere else that you can think of that we want to focus on?
Like, I wouldn't even let my son ride his bike, because I don't even think it's safe, in our neighborhood. Those are kind of, kind of other parents, I would think, you know, one of the destinies of the community would want to think about.
I would, I would second what Councilman Gay is saying. We have that same issue in Ward One on the west end of Rugby. The whole subdivision out there, Parkview, Parkview Circle, Parkview Drive, Ridgeway. There's a whole acres and acres of property over there that do not have sidewalks. And I've always subscribed to the fact that, well, if they had wanted sidewalks, they would have had them put in when they were there. You know, when they, when they built the subdivision. However, the character of the city is changing. We've got a lot more traffic. We've had numerous complaints. Both the mayor and I have had complaints, uh, from people along Rugby. I've gotten them from people along Parkview that sidewalks are needed in that area. And, um, with the connection to Sixth West and the streets going through into Sixth West, we're going to have to have additional protections for pedestrians. And while we're thinking about it, one of the things that I think we're going to need to do on, for example, on Parkview, I think we're, if that street is going to go through, which I think it will, we're going to have to look at the concept of a rotary to slow the traffic down. Speed cushions are not going to do it. And Councilman Gay, you may want to consider the same thing. I would also mention that right here on College, people walking up College to go to the Recreation, Connolly Recreation Center, or the Hawks Court, or the Badgett Field, there are no sidewalks for a couple of blocks along College. I have not pushed for that primarily because it will be a huge undertaking. It will take trees and moving telephone poles and so forth and so on. And there are probably some property owners along there that won't be happy about that. But if we're going to go with a walkable city, then we're going to have to bite the bullet and figure out how to do that too.
And I think all of that aligns with Goal Four. It talks about high-quality, safe transportation infrastructure and including expanding, enhancing the trail system and other bike and pedestrian facilities to create last-mile connections to MARTA. So I think we're already talking about that here, um, and there may be some opportunities, uh, coming down the pike from the state and perhaps some of our federal partners to look at some of these infrastructure issues that are so critical to the quality of life for so many of our residents.
It's, it's going to take grants to support it, because the amount of sidewalk, if we did everything, just on one side of the street.
I think there's opportunities coming, I, I think there's opportunities probably within the next couple of weeks, um, if, if we identify those priorities, uh, because the state has, um, will be opening up, uh, their ARPA funds for, uh, for proposals coming up soon, and obviously, our representatives on the federal level are looking at a new infrastructure bill, and certainly we can have an opportunity to voice our, our interests there as well.
But to echo in what Councilman Gay and Clay said, we've got the same thing over near Woodward.
Yeah.
There's some streets over there, and people are walking in the street as, as cars are coming to the school.
Absolutely.
Parents dropping them off, and their kids are walking down the street. So, uh, you know, we just need to take a hard look at that.
I would, I would love if Public Works could give us a tally of the number of street miles that we have that have no sidewalks on either side of the street. I mean, if you've only got it on one side of the street, you can only afford so much. So at least, at least if there's one side on the street, I won't count that. But, uh, I'll bet you will be surprised of how many miles we have. I know when we were talking about the fire truck going around last Christmas, it seems to me we had eighty miles of streets.
I think it's a little bit more than that. That might have been a residential number.
That was, that was a res, that was a residential number.
It's a-
Because I was asking the question, well, how far is the fire truck going to have to drive, and how long is it going to take, and what have you?
Right. I, I think that's, that's a great question and, and one that we can probably home, home in on as we, as we get those infrastructure priorities and communicate them to our state and our federal partners. Any other questions from Ms. Washington, though? Hearing none, I think we are done with the workshop session, and we'll see everybody at seven-thirty. Thank you, everybody.